All right, if you can take the roll, please.
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ru Simmons. Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revel. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. And Alderman Fisk. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, City Clerk, and welcome, everybody, to the first City Council meeting of the 2020 decade. So today is Monday, January 13th. I hope everybody had a nice break from our last meeting in December. And we have lots of business to cover this evening, as usual, but also in this coming year in 2020. So first off, a couple of announcements, and then I have a couple of proclamations I'd like to acknowledge tonight. First announcement is just kudos to the Evanston Parks Department and the Facilities Department for the work that they did doing interior renovations to Fleetwood Jordaine, which is our second-most-used community center. There was a wonderful celebration of that this past Saturday. Many people from the community came out, the contractors came out, and it was great to see Fleetwood get a facelift that really was based on the input from all the residents and people that use the center. So thank you for everybody's hard work on that. We have lots going on with our community centers around Evanston, and I know we'll be celebrating Robert Crown later this year as well and all the work on that. Secondly, this weekend is a celebration of Martin Luther King and the Civil Rights Movement and all of the work that has been done and is still being done in this country and in this community. So for anybody that would like to participate in that, and if you didn't get a chance, you'll get a chance to come to Fleetwood Jordaine and participate in the celebration that day, and that is this Sunday at 3:00 p.m. I also just wanted to acknowledge a big community event memorial to celebrate the life of Charlie Vernon yesterday, and hundreds of people came. It was at the Levy Center. And for those of you that don't know Charlie, he was a wonderful individual, and he was the husband of Mary Beth Schroeder, who has been very involved in this community with the Evanston Community Foundation. And after a long illness, Charlie passed away just before Christmas. And it was a beautiful service and ceremony for him yesterday. So, you know, our prayers and thoughts are with the family and all that Charlie has done for this community. Last, I've got two proclamations today, and we have folks here with both organizations. So the first one I'm going to do is a proclamation which is in recognition of a National Day of Racial Healing. All right, we talk a lot about race in this community and equity in this community, and we're doing a lot, okay? We are not a perfect community, but we're doing a lot of things well, and we are work in progress, and we continue to work towards racial healing here and people in this community elsewhere in the country. So I'm really pleased to recognize this day. It will be January 21st, 2020. And I'm going to ask Eileen Heineman if she would come up. And today is also a special day because today is Eileen's birthday. Happy birthday.
I know how to celebrate.
You didn't think I was going to let that pass? So Eileen, why don't you, and I'll come down after you mention this, if we want a photo up or anything, just talk to people about this day and the activities that'll be taking place around Evanston.
Sure. So the National Day of Racial Healing is something that has come out of work that's been funded by the Kellogg Foundation, which has been doing this kind of work across the country for several years, way before other foundations thought they should fund anything related to racial equity or racial justice. And in the city of Chicago, a group of people started being trained as facilitators of racial healing circles, which are opportunities for people to come together and, in one-on-one conversations, hear each other's stories and start to break down some of the absolutely created barriers that exist between us, and also to start to recognize the common humanity. And that's really a place where healing can start. And as the city of Evanston moves forward on reparations, this needs to be a side-by-side piece of it. And so I'm happy to say that between YWCA, the Equity and Empowerment Commission, Ridgeville Park District, Garrett Theological Seminary, we're going to be hosting five racial healing circles during next week, and people have an opportunity to sign up for those. And I'll leave some flyers out on the table if you want to get the address at which you can register for anyone who lives or works or worships in Evanston. We are really encouraging this as an opportunity for people to have this experience, and hopefully this becomes an ongoing tool that either the community as a whole or individual organizations can use to really start to get to know each other in ways that we have not allowed ourselves or have not been encouraged to in the past. So I'm really grateful for the work that the Equity and Empowerment Commission has done to support this and to use this as one of the tools that they'll be, you know, encouraging people to use as we move forward in this community. As you say, we talk about it a lot. We need to keep moving. We need to be really talking not just with the people that we already know, but talking to people that we don't know. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to say this.
Stay right there, and I'll bring this down. And just if you would let people know where they can find the list of events, if it's on the YWCA.
Yes, it's on the YWCA website. You can just go right on to ywca.org/evanston, and there'll be a note right on there about racial healing circles.
And I hope people will take her up on this offer and attend. I put it on my calendar already because there's one upstairs in the parasol room.
Register, though.
I gotta register.
You gotta register.
And so I hope others will join. So let me bring this down and present this to you, and then we've got one more. And since I'm down here, I figured I would just stay down here. The second proclamation this evening that I'd like to present is to the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority on their celebration of 100 years. We have lots of Zetas here in the house, in the house tonight. I am not going to read the entire proclamation, but I do want to read just one section of it, just so you have a sense of the impact that the sororities and fraternities have in a community. I mean, and this is over 100 years. So since its chartering in 2012, the Evanston Graduate Chapter of Omega Phi Zeta has demonstrated outstanding community service in local school outreach and programming, support of and partnerships with faith-based communities, nonprofits, professional organizations, and benevolent entities that are part of the fabric of the Evanston community. These works include monthly workshops and services to senior citizens residing in prim towers, scholarships for high school seniors, sponsoring participants through Evanston's Unity and African-American Youth Achievement Award Ceremony, which is coming up, by the way, supporting YWCA initiatives such as the Women's Shelter and Race Against Hate, supporting and serving at and preparing food for local soup kitchens, adopting Mason Park as part of the Adopt a Park program, as well as assisting the local branch of the NAACP. So lots of important work that this group has done. So it is my pleasure as the mayor of Evanston to proclaim January 16th, 2020, as Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Day in the city of Evanston, and encourage all to extend our best wishes and gratitude to the members of this organization for their lasting services to our community. So congratulations, ladies. One of you come on up here. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
No announcements, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, any announcements?
We announced this thing.
Okay, so is that all you had?
So I do, yeah, a few announcements. I just do want to first acknowledge receipt of a letter of support for Simpson and Dodge from Ms. Camon Hendricks that we have here in front of us, as well as, I do want to make an announcement. Folks may know that, you know, this year, folks will start circulating petitions to run for office here in Evanston. And I do want to announce that, and get it on folks' radar, that after the March election, after we have the nonpartisan primary, or the nonpartisan question that comes up in the March primary, the Clerk's office will be hosting an information session to let folks know what all of the rules are and how you can get on the ballot and run for office here in Evanston, will walk the folks through the filing process and the objection process. So more details about that will be coming soon.
Okay, great, great, thank you. Before we get to the next item, I did notice there was a light on. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just had to quickly recognize, I realize the organization is much larger, but I do want to say thank you very much to the three women and the organization that are Second Ward residents and all the wonderful work that you do, particularly with your support with Race Against Hate. And that's when I really see you show up. So I know individually you all are very committed to the community. As well, one of our city staff, Indira Perkins, is also a member of the organization. So I think we're one of two municipal organizations that are recognizing your group, so congratulations again. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I had a bunch of names here, and I didn't rattle them off, because it looked like there were a lot more of you than just the five names they put on this paper. So I apologize for not when I was up there. All right, change is in the air here in Evanston, both in this room. If you looked around, something's different. That's pretty noticeable. We used to have portraits for a long time, and it was great to have them up here, of female leaders here in Evanston that lined this room for quite some time, and now we have some different art that's up here. I didn't get briefed on it before to understand if this is all local artists, which I would hope it is. So lots of local artists up there. The second change is we're going to try something new with public comment in the time. And so we always seem to have a challenge, right? Because sometimes we divvy it up and we figure out how much time everybody has, and it's really important that we stay within that time so we can get through it all in 45 minutes, which is what the council designates for the total amount of time for public comment, but also so we can be respectful to the other people that are behind us that want to get up and have their two minutes or minute 30 or whatever it is that evening. So we have a device now that's right up here between Clerk Reed and I called the Limit Timer. Now, the good news is the Limit Timer does not, you know, give you an electric shock, okay, when you get there, but there's apparently a light there. So when you're up at public comment, the Limit Timer, and we get to set it up here based on the amount of time we have, will tell you when your time is up. So we get to see that up here, too. So when it's red, it's red. It means it's over, okay? Your time is up, and then we got to move to the next one, okay? So we all need to respect the Limit Timer, okay, and the lights, and we'll see how this goes for the city of Evanston. So tonight we have, it looks like 30.
There are about 29 folks.
29, okay. So 29 folks signed up for public comment. Oh, okay, perfect. So we've already set the timer for a minute 35? That's very specific. As many of you know, you might already like the Limit Timer, because I would have said a minute 30 and called it a day, but the Limit Timer does the math, and you get an extra five seconds.
I did the math, but.
So thank you, thank you, Clerk Reed, for, excellent, for being, the machine itself doesn't do it. We have to depend on a human for that, so good job. So you've got a minute 35, and we are going to get this rolling. So Jordan Banks, you're going to be the first one up. You want to come up, Jordan? And then we've got Robin Gabel, and then James Engelman, and then David Combs.
And I will let you know, from your perspective, you're the first person to try this, so thank you, Ms. Banks. There is a little yellow light that'll let you know when you have 15 seconds left, and then it'll beep when your time is up.
Hi. So hello, my name is Jordan Banks, and I live in Evanston. I am 13 years old and a U.S. Army brat. In fact, this meeting was taking place tomorrow. I would be 14-year-old because tomorrow's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
I attend Nichols Middle School, and I am in eighth grade. I am currently in student council, and I am also a student ambassador. I earn honor roll, and I am also a Girl Scout. I am currently academic rank within the Girl Scout, and I am working to earn my Silver Award. The Silver Award is a project that I have to create for my community that is valuable and will last for many years. I had the idea to work with the city of Evanston to install its very first dog park. I thought I was going to have to start from scratch. Thankfully, Northwestern University recently gave a very generous donation to the city of Evanston for $1 million, which included $80,000 for a dog park in Evanston. With all due respect, I am here to personally ask if I may sit on the advisory board or planning committee for the dog park project. I'd really like to be a part of that team. I feel like I could be very useful on this project while at the same time I could still earn my Silver Award. Could you please advise me how to proceed? Thank you very much for all you do for our community, and thank you for listening. I look forward to receiving your guidance.
All right, thank you, Jordan. Jordan, I'm going to tell you. I was going to do that. Okay. So I was going to say, Jordan, just send me an email, and I'm going to connect you to probably the park director or someone else here in the organization. We'll get you involved. We'd love to have you involved. This is very exciting. We're in the very early stages. There's a lot of work to be done, but it would be a great project. So thank you for coming out, okay?
Also invite her to the Animal Welfare Board meeting. So check our city of Evanston's website and look under the committees to attend one of our Animal Welfare Board meetings. We would welcome you to be there.
And we got one more, Alderman Rainey.
This girl's credentials are amazing. I move, she be approved immediately. All those in favor, say aye.
Very good, wow. We never agree on anything that quickly up here. This is saying something. New Year's off to a good start. So thank you, Jordan, for coming out and wanting to be involved in that. You bet. All right, Representative, Robin Gabel is with us tonight. All right.
Thank you, thank you. So good evening. My name is Robin Gabel, and I'm your state representative, serving the 18th district. I would like to first thank City Council for welcoming my constituent services office to our new location right down the hall. We love the synergy here and are glad to be in such a convenient location for our constituents. I stand before you tonight in staunch support of the Evanston Back From the Brink Anti-Nuclear Resolution, calling for Congress to become a global leader in the effort to prevent nuclear war. I remember the fear I felt growing up as my classmates and I practiced hiding under our desks, knowing now that should a bomb have headed our way, that these drills would not have protected us from the horrors of a nuclear blast. Now the threat of nuclear catastrophe is heightened. Nine countries have amassed over 14,000 nuclear weapons. The effects of climate change increase the likelihood of conflict and the danger of nuclear war. We know that the use of a fraction of the global nuclear weapons arsenal would have devastatingly irrevocable consequences to our planet, and that a national defense strategy based on nuclear armament decreases rather than increases our national security. This resolution is a strong signal to our federal government that the prohibition of nuclear weapons is achievable, necessary, and urgent. The threat of nuclear war is real. Such an event would be a disaster for our planet. I urge a yes vote to this resolution. I'm also going to present a resolution like this to the state. I'm done, except that I just want you to know that I think that the senior housing on Howard Street's a great idea.
Thank you, Representative Gabel. James, come on up. James Engelman, then we've got David Combs, then Marsha Bernstein.
Hello, I'm James Engelman. I'm from Fifth Ward. I would like to talk about the 1829 Sifson. I think you guys should buy it and then make it a watchroom for people, because it's serious citizens who walk through the park. If they have to go watch them, there's no watchroom around there. So thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you, thank you, James. Good to see you in the new year. David Combs, then Marsha, then Marsha Bernstein, then Kevin Feeney.
Good evening. I'm here also to speak in support of the Nuclear Weapons, quote-unquote, Back From the Brink Resolution. And I'd like to make with my time very clear that we all, those of us speaking in support of the resolution, are here to ask you to act on the local issue of nuclear weapons. We know that Chicago, very close to our borders here in Evanston, is one of the top targets in the unimaginable event of a nuclear exchange that would involve the United States. And in Evanston here, there would be no medical response that we could possibly provide in the event of a nuclear exchange near our borders. And so we'd like to ask you this evening, please do the one thing that you can do as city councilors here in Evanston, and pass this resolution to make it clear where Evanston stands. Additionally, more than $22 million leaves Evanston every year, and that will continue for the foreseeable future for nuclear weapons expenses. And so please, with this resolution, take a step, again, that we and you can take, and take responsibility for these dollars. Make it clear that while we may not have a direct say over where the dollars go, we do have something to say about them, and we would like to see policy change. I would close just quickly by saying, when I made these words to the Human Services Committee about a month ago, we said that the federal government is watching, Jan Schakowsky, our representative, is watching, and since that time, we are thrilled to be able to say that Senator Dick Durbin has decided to support one of the bills in Congress. And so our message is being heard. Please continue that. Thank you.
Great, great job with the time there, too, David. Good job. All right, Marsha, come on up. We got Marsha Bernstein, then Kevin Feeney, then Michael Wolff.
The speakers who have spoken before have done an incredibly wonderful job, so I'm not going to belabor the point. I just want to mention that President Trump withdrew the United States from the Joint Comprehensive Plan of Action having to do with nuclear weapons. It definitely put us on a more combative footing with Iran. If nothing in the last two weeks haven't shown us that, you know, this is not a good time to be poking the bear, any bear, in the Middle East. So I hope that Evanston will stand up and say, the threat of nuclear weapons is just too great. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. All right. Father Feeney, then Michael Wolff, and then David Fisher.
Thank you for listening to us on this important issue of nuclear ban. I want to take most of my time to really introduce a special guest who is here, Mr. Hiro Kazu Miyazaki, who's a professor at Northwestern and has served as peace correspondent for the city of Nagasaki since 2018, and is getting involved locally with his parish on peace and justice issues. He has asked the mayor of Nagasaki to come to speak at Northwestern on May 4th of this year, and so we'll have more details on that event. So I want to thank him for his presence and for giving momentum to this cause. I just want to highlight the problem of human error associated with nuclear possibilities. We have seen in the past couple of weeks that human error caused the shooting down of an airline, Ukraine airline, killing 176 noncombatants. And we know that human error can enter through poor intelligence, false alarms, et cetera. So in addition to what other people have said about this cause, I want to highlight that problem as well. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Father. Michael Wolff, come on up, Michael. David Fisher, then Rick Marsh.
Thank you for your time. I am going to read some of the community partners in Evanston that are supporters of the Back From the Brink Resolution. St. Nicholas Peace and Justice Committee, as well as Father Bob Aldershall, pastor emeritus at St. Nicholas Church, the Sheehan Center at Northwestern University with Father Kevin Keeney and the pastor of the Sheehan Center, St. Mary's Church with Father Kevin McCray, pastor at St. Mary's Church, St. Joan of Arc Church with Father Kenneth Anderson, and he's the pastor, St. Anthony's Church with Father Hernan Cuevas, pastor at St. Anthony's Church, Second Baptist Church with Reverend Dr. Michael Neighbors, who's the pastor there, Reba Place Church with Pastor Charlotte Lehman, and Lake Street Peace and Justice Committee and myself, Reverend Michael Wolff, as the pastor at Lake Street Church. The following organizations are also supportive of this measure: the Evanston Friends Meeting, the Jewish Reconstructionist Congregation, Unitarian Church of Evanston Peace and Justice Committee, Pastor Daniel Ruin of Grace Lutheran Church, St. Anthony's Peace and Justice Ministry, St. Joseph and Francis Xavier Parish Peace and Justice Ministry, the Benedictine Sisters of Chicago, the American Friends Service Committee of Chicago, Neighbors for Peace, Voices for Creative Nonviolence, the Union of Concerned Scientists, Physicians for Social Responsibility, and Chicago Area Peace Action. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We've got David Fisher next, Rick Marsh, and then Michael Neighbors.
Hello again. My name is David Fisher. My partner, Liam, has been taken home by his mother because it's way past his bedtime. But because of Liam, I definitely support the Non-Nuclear Proliferation Resolution as well. But I'm here for something a little more mundane, and that is the condo deconversion moratorium. I appreciate that in the subcommittee, it was taken from six months down to three months. However, I think that even at three months, that doesn't really solve the problem, but just also then creates some challenges. For, as I said in the subcommittee, I represent, I'm on the board of the 200 South Boulevard condominium. We're an eight-unit condo. We have been working diligently for months to actually get a condo deconversion process moving forward in our building, and we think we've finally got it set. As Alderman Rainey pointed out, it takes a lot of moving parts and a long time to make it happen, and most of us owners are underwater if we sell individually, but if we work together as a group, we can be made whole. And in fact, we have a number of owners in the building who are currently renting because they had children, they moved out, but could not sell because of the condo market. And I definitely think there's value in looking at the deconversion process and putting in more stringent, or at least the best processes to make everybody safe and secure. I mean, this is real estate, it's our home. It's an important issue, but I think putting a moratorium in place while you're doing that is, it's going to affect us negatively, and I'd ask that you not to put that into place. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thank you, everybody, for listening to the machine up here. All right, Rick, yeah, welcome, welcome, Rick. Happy New Year, come on up. Then Reverend Michael Neighbors, and then Ally Harnett.
All right, Rick Marsh here. Eighth Ward, been living in Evanston for 35 years, been active and involved with youth development, and I'm here in support of the Youth and Young Adult Division. I've, you know, again, Curse Cafe, board president of Curse Cafe and a mentor. I've been involved in the fam youth basketball program for 35 years as a coach and mentor. So I have seen firsthand the benefits of this program, of the Youth and Young Adult Division. Now, this is my third time coming here and having these same discussions, you know, with you all. The silence has been pretty much, pretty deafening, and we just haven't really heard much at all. So I've heard support from Alderman about this division, but I haven't heard real support from the city on this program. I know they've been in budgetary flux for the last 18 months. And so I'm just here to really talk about the importance of that program, and how it's good for our young people and how it's great for our community. So that's important. So I just want to say publicly, I would love to hear something publicly, of support, you know, for this program. Thank you.
Well, you know, I support, and I think everybody up here supports it, it's in the budget, fully funded for 2020, the Youth and Young Adult. The city manager has asked for a second, so I'm going to give her the floor for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, you know, agree and reiterate our commitment to the Youth and Young Adult Program. We've, it's fully funded for the year. There's no discussion at all about reducing it. You know, we want to continue those services, we value those services, those good services will continue to be provided. There will be an announcement coming out this week about a new person who has been named to that position, so that, I think, will be out perhaps tomorrow or on Wednesday. But let there be no mistake, the program will continue. It is one of the premier programs that we do, and we are committed to it 100%.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Reverend Neighbors, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to City Clerk Reed and members of City Council. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share just a few words in support of the Nuclear Disarmament Resolution. In the late 1980s, I served as a pastor of a church in Princeton. Just two blocks away, there was an official home that housed the Coalition for Nuclear Disarmament. It was very big in the 1980s and 1990s. The executive director, Reverend Robert Moore, became a dear friend. This was at a time when the threat of nuclear war was very real. This was at a time when talk of stocking nuclear arms and proliferation was not just talk, but it was happening between the two worlds' superpowers. Reverend Moore and I often went back and forth about the urgent issues of the day. I would talk about local issues, crime and violence, and the horrible epidemic of crack cocaine in our area. I mentioned the rise of HIV/AIDS and its overpowering devastation in minority communities then. In 1991, I eulogized 10 young adults between the ages of 27 and 40 within a six-month span. All of them were heroin users who were given AIDS through shared needles. This in a town with less than 25,000 people. Reverend Moore would look at me with empathetic eyes and genuine compassion, but he would always say, "Yes, but Reverend Neighbors, all life will end if we do not demand an end to stockpiling nuclear arms and then reducing those that exist." These 30 years later, we face the same crucial juxtaposition in our world, local problems beset us, and they continue. Thank you for your personal commitment to vote for peace and not war. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being a good role model, too, with our new system. Thank you. Ally Harnett. All right. Ally, are you here? Come on up. Beth Stare, then Lisa Degliatoni, and then we'll have Gail Schechner.
I'm Ally Harnett from the 2nd Ward. I agree with Mayor Hagerty's statement at the beginning of this meeting that Evanston is a community that is doing some things with the goal of working on promoting equity and racial healing, and that we have a long way to go. If we are truly committed to the work of dismantling systemic racism and oppression, we have some excellent opportunities right now to accelerate the process right here in the city of Evanston. First, we must make right the wrong of the termination of Kevin Brown. City Council must fulfill their public pledge to support and strengthen the Youth and Young Adult Division. Also, there must be a racial equity audit of staff operations as soon as possible by a neutral third party and not by the city's own staff. Also, the Evanston Voter Initiative is an excellent opportunity to add to the legislative process here in Evanston, where council members will have an additional way to receive feedback from your constituents through citizen-initiated ballot initiatives. We will have lots to say about how all the benefits of voting yes in the March ballot, but first, we must secure our rightful place on the ballot by overcoming an objection that is attempting to keep the referendum off the ballot, which would disenfranchise the entire Evanston electorate. It is fitting that the next part of the Electoral Board hearing is this Wednesday, January 15th. It is the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whose life was dedicated to civil rights, including the democratically essential right to vote. I would like to read a quote from the Electoral Board hearing of December 12, 2016, former Evanston Mayor Tisdale in introducing the beginning of the Electoral Board hearings, when now Mayor Hagerty and now Clerk Devon Reed were both facing objections to their candidacy. "Evanston has a long tradition of respecting and promoting ballot access." Am I done? Oh.
You are.
Let the people vote. It's okay, it's on YouTube. You can go watch it, and you can look at it on Evanston Voter Initiative Facebook page.
Thanks, Ally.
Thank you.
Thanks for your son coming out, too. All right, that's Beth Stare. Why don't you come on up? Lisa Degliatoni, then Gail Schechner, then Carla Sutton.
Hi, Beth Stare, 9th Ward. Thank you for your service to the Evanston community. In the spirit of racial healing, we need to acknowledge that the community is hurting. The community is hurting over city managers' actions against Kevin Brown and the Youth and Young Adult Division. My underlying concern, and what I hear in the community, is about fairness with respect to treatment of city staff, and how the city's treatment impacts the people served, especially our youth. In the past, and even tonight, you've made a public pledge to support this division. Please share and outline how you intend to strengthen and empower this division, not just keep it funded, but empower it, strengthen it. Please conduct a comprehensive equity, racial equity audit of all staff operations across city departments to identify and repair systemic problems of disproportionate treatment of staff operations. It's imperative that the equity audit is conducted by a neutral third party and not by the city's own staff. I can't come to every city meeting, so those of you on the election board, please accept my comments now. Please do not support attempts to support voters' voices. I believe you support democracy and a strong and active voter base. I hope the election board makes the correct decision and allows the Evanston Voter Initiative petition to be on the ballot in March. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, Lisa Degliatoni, Gail Schechner, Carla Sutton, and then Brenda Greer.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, council members. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Lisa Dellen Tony, and I'm representing Evanston Maide. Most recently, it was the recipient of the Mayor's Award for the Arts. We are a nonprofit organization that works to connect Evanston artists with the public at large through programming, professional development, and events. As you have noticed, the walls are new. You are looking at 12 exhibiting artists that we've invited to show on these walls. Thank you very much. Paulina Martinez was key in making this happen. Essentially, every six months, we are going to do a call of art from the 300 members who are part of our organization, all of them visual artists either living or working in Evanston. The theme of this show was work that was inspired by Evanston's natural beauty. This will be up for six months, and it is timed perfectly for Art for Earth Month, which happens in April. It will be a citywide curatorial exhibition of art celebrating the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. Yes, sorry. Essentially, all of the art that you're looking at is, more information is available on our website at evanstonmaide.org, and it will be up until June. And at that point, we will rotate it with another 12 artists. So, if you want more information, there's little flyers along the wall. We will also make more robust signage as I sit here. It looks a little bit sparse, but we appreciate the chance to curate the walls. It's a wonderful opportunity for our artists, and like I said, every six months, there will be 12 more. So, thank you so much, and have a lovely day.
Thank you, Lisa, for the work of Evanston Maide, Gail Schechner. If Gail wants to come on up, then Carla Sutton, then Brenda Greer, then Tina Payden.
Thank you. Good evening. I've been a partner through the Addy Wyatt Center of Nonviolence Training, of the Evanston Youth and Young Adult Division, or TEAM Outreach, and know and respect its work. Over 100 people spoke out over the last three consecutive city council meetings in support of Kevin Brown and the successful direction he set for TEAM Outreach. At the first meeting, Alderman Braithwaite said, and I quote, "I hope that you continue to come back until we get this matter resolved, because for me, this is not a personnel issue. It's really deeper and speaks to the community, our values, and more importantly, our black children," unquote. It is in that spirit that I am here. We are here, two days before Dr. King's birthday, when we can reaffirm that all we do is in line with justice, fairness, and civil rights. Certainly, the genius of Kevin's leadership was his ability, and by extension, his teams, to take a holistic approach to young people, mentoring them and meeting them where they're at. The process of replacing Kevin should have integrity, respectful, and worthy of the youth and young adults served. I also urge you to authorize and fully fund a racial equity audit by a neutral third party. The recent history of exits of well-respected and highly-placed city staff all black is alarming. Kevin Brown is only the latest. The government alliance on race and equity is an appropriate national resource that Evanston could join. I'd like to just close by saying that what better message can you send to the people of Evanston, especially its youth, that the city council views racial equity as part and parcel of a city commitment to reparations? Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Carla Sutton, come on up. Carlos, Brenda Greer, Tina Payden, and Robinson Marcus.
Okay, all right. Good evening. My name's Brenda Greer, and again, I'm here on speaking in regards to Mr. Kevin Brown. Being a resident of Evanston and having several family members murdered in Evanston, and I'll change, it was not three, there were two murdered in Evanston, one that lived in Evanston but was murdered in Lincolnwood. And she had three youths at the time that I'm sure Kevin and the Youth Division could have worked with. I was very glad and proud of the work being done by the Youth Division and Mr. Brown's involvement with the youth. Our crime rate due to community, our police department, and Mr. Brown's involvement, there has been a great improvement. It's sad that his reinstatement did not occur before his acquiring legal representation. All the money that's being paid to those being wrongly fired by the city of Evanston could have very well gone toward community development, the police or firemen's pension funds. And I thank you very much, Kurt's Cafe, for hiring my great nephew, who it really did work out well for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Tina Payden, come on up. Robinson Marcus, then Prudence Moylan.
My name is Tina Payden, and I live at 1122 Emerson Street. The paper that I'm passing around is a code violation from the city of Evanston. And if you'll turn on the second page, it says that the bush on the north side of the property is encroaching onto the public right-of-way. Trim the bush. And they're coming back for an inspection on the 22nd of January. Who's trimming bushes in January? Please tell me. This is harassment. I am tired of the city of Evanston harassing my family for over 30 years in this city. I have lived at this address for almost 50 years. My family has been at this address for over 100 years in Evanston. And all we get is harassment from the city of Evanston. It is out of control and unacceptable. And you will be responsible. I am here to collect my money from the city of Evanston. Seven times, we've been sued by the city of Evanston, which totals over 20 years in court. If my mom was not an attorney and an alderman in this city, we would have nothing. And Northwestern, and you need to get together and figure out how you're going to support my family through this harassment. I'm not going to take it anymore, and everybody's going to be accountable in this room. It is out of control.
Thank you, Ms. Payden. Robinson Marcus. And before you, come on up, Robinson, but I've got one thing from Alderman Fleming. Yes, Alderman.
I just, I made a referral, I think, to PND. I just want to make sure it's on the agenda somewhere. I had some residents who had similar concerns regarding this. We just talked about the snow enforcement, and we know that that's quite dangerous for people walking our streets. So, just wanted to remind, and hopefully, that's on the agenda. We can talk about code enforcement and how these things are distributed if our, you know, team is just walking around picking on people, how we, how these things get to people's homes. I think that would be a conversation.
Agreed. And city manager, if you take the lead, just sort of looking into all of that, including what Ms. Payden's upset about. Robinson, welcome.
Welcome. Greetings to members of city council, city staff, and all residents in attendance. My name is Robinson, better known as Robbie Marcus. I am a 3rd Ward resident and the vice president and co-founder of the Evanston Development Cooperative, along with Dick Coe. I speak tonight to encourage you to support Item P7, the Accessory Dwelling Unit, or Coach House Ordinance. As housing costs continue to outpace income gains in our community, I believe this ordinance paves the way for a better use of land and for the creation of much-needed, more sensible housing units in this community. Based on the Evanston Development Cooperative's research, this ordinance provides approximately 802 flat owners with the new right to build this unit on their property, meaning that this policy not only works towards housing affordability, but also racial equity, given that a majority of properties or 2-flats that would gain the right to build a home in their backyard are located in west and southwest Evanston. With this in mind, I respectfully ask that you support Item P7 tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Robbie. Prudence Moylan, if you're here, Prudence. Then we've got Ray Freeman, then Margaret Nielsen, and then Bennett Johnson.
Prudence left.
Prudence left? Okay, so she's not here. How about Ray?
He's off.
Okay, if we don't see Ray, how about, there's Ray. Come on up, Ray. Moving you up. And then after Ray will be Margaret Nielsen, Bennett Johnson, and then Bonnie Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. I wasn't going to speak, but I changed my mind. I just really wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. But thinking about the two things that I've had in my mind that I spoke about the last two years, one was having public comment, being there to create the dialogue. Why can't we have this dialogue? When can we have this dialogue? Where? Why can't we get any responses to our public comment? That's number one. Number two, I thought about city council members, aldermen, alderwomen, and I've heard it said a few times last year, that if we don't like the job that the aldermen, alderwomen are doing, why don't we run for the job ourselves? Or the position, I'm sorry. So, I said, "Well, I didn't run for the position. You ran for the position. So, what were you all hoping to accomplish? What was your goal when you ran for the position?" So, I just was wondering if you could share with us, what was your plan? What was, with all due respect, what was your plan? What was your goal in running for your office? And did you accomplish the goal that you intended when you ran? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. I know you want it to be a dialogue, and I am sorry, we're not going to be able to have that dialogue during public comment. But we can always talk about it at the Rules Committee if we want to change how we do these things. Margaret Nielsen, come on up, and then Bennett Johnson, and then Bonnie Wilson.
It's Margaret Nelson. I'm a resident of the 5th Ward in the far northeast corner of it. Oh, we might not like it, but we'd better get used to it. Better get used to it. Better get used to it. We might not like it, but we'd better get used to it. We're living in just one world. We say first world, second world. Those guys are the third. Those guys are the third. Oh, those guys are the third. But there is just one planet. Now, haven't you heard? We are living in just one world. If we keep dumping carbon, climate will get hotter. Climate will get hotter. Climate will get hotter. Gonna be some shortages of food and water, 'cause we're living in just one world. If the nations start to starve, could be war and revolution. War and revolution. War and revolution. Military might will not be a solution, 'cause we're living in just one world. If the north half of Earth starts swapping bombs. Swapping bombs. Oh, swapping bombs. That nuclear dust will come home to mom. We're living in just one world. So, I won't apologize or ask anybody's pardon. Anybody's pardon. Anybody's pardon. I don't want plutonium polluting my garden. We are living in just one world.
That was Margaret Nelson, everybody. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful voice. I'm going to put you down as a supporter of the resolutions this evening. Mr. Johnson, welcome, Bennett Johnson.
Yeah, I used to sing, but not that well.
Yeah, I used to sing, but not that well. I'm here, I have something unique. Two days from now is the birthday of Dr. King, and I was born five months after he was born. He was born in January. I was born May 15th. And I met him in 1955, when I was at UCLA, and we worked together the rest of his life. And he was for racial equity, and that's what I've been trying to do most of my spare time. I'm concerned about the handling of the dismissal of Kevin Brown. And he represents a pattern. It's not just one instance. It was one thing we could deal with, the so-called reasons. But we have Suzette Robinson, we have the problem that Mr. Reed has had, we have Leslie Williams, Ivana. There's several black people who have been fired unless this city, because of the pressure which is unfortunate and it shows a weakness in a racial pattern, racial, pattern of racial discrimination. The other thing is that demos is a Greek word, which means people. And so we live in a democracy. And the fact that the Evanston Voter Initiative was mishandled, as far as I was concerned, in the last meeting means that we, you so-called Republican representatives, need to make sure we handle it properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Bennett. All right. Bonnie Wilson, Sue Lalabac, and then Jackson Paula.
Thank you, Mayor and Alderman. I'm Bonnie Wilson. I live in the 1st Ward. And I have been an Evanston Realtor for over 35 years in this community. And I have seen firsthand the increase in housing costs in our city over the last few decades. Tonight, I encourage you to pass Ordinance 171-0-119, the Accessory Dwelling Unit, ADU, Ordinance Revision to Take a Step Forward on Affordable Housing. This policy can facilitate the creation of critically needed housing units across our city by giving two-flat owners the right to build a housing unit. With this in mind, please support Ordinance 171019 to legalize new opportunities to healthy, more affordable homes in our community. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Sue, welcome. Happy New Year. And then Jackson Paula, then Doreen Price, then the last speaker will be Priscilla Giles tonight.
Great. Happy New Year. I'm Sue Lalabac. I work at Connections for the Homeless here in Evanston and represent a coalition called Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. Just very quickly, I want to state that Joining Forces supports the changes to the ADU requirements and qualifications that are coming up tonight. While these changes won't necessarily by themselves create new affordability, the more flexibility we allow, the more likely it is that we can implement affordable solutions. We feel that these ordinance changes are a step in the right direction and hope that you'll support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Jackson, come on up. And then we've got Doreen Price, then Priscilla Giles.
Jackson Pollard, 1st Ward. So first, very briefly, want to add my voice to the others who've spoken on two issues. I strongly support the Back from the Brink Resolution and on racial equity. Kevin Brown should not have been fired, and I hope the city continues to protect and strengthen the Youth and Young Adult Division. Related to that, I'm still a little concerned on the process for the contract to execute the search for the next city manager. I've spoken on this issue before and believe what I said last time. The city manager has an incredible amount of power, and once the hiring process is finalized, the, is essentially unaccountable to the Evanston residents, the Evanston voters. The hiring process is the time for the public to have our input, and I saw nothing in the packet today that said what that input would be, or really if the public would have any input in this search at all. So take that obligation seriously. The public needs to lead.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you, Jackson. And the public will have input in the process once we get this executive search firm on board. Doreen Price, are you here, Doreen? Come on up. And then Priscilla Giles will wrap it up tonight.
Happy New Year, everybody. The, this article kind of came across when I was doing other things, and it's like one of those things when you read it later, you go, oh, my God. So it starts off, it's an article that I'll forward, because I wasn't planning to speak either. Farmers are buying 40-year-old tractors because they're actually repairable. And this goes back to, as a community, what do we do when we look at resources? And trying to keep money in the community, a lot of discussions with regard to, is it Pastor Wilson? With regard to community efforts and keeping money in the community, and really looking at it from an economic standpoint, and seeing when money leaves the community. And not only leaves the community, but a lot of times the business model is incompatible with human life, let alone what's left behind in the, in the, in the lack of forethought and long-term thinking that you get with local businesses. You've never heard me speak about being such a proponent of local businesses, but in this today and age, I know some local business owners that are amazing. Homer's Ice Cream in Womet, as an example, where they keep prices affordable, people like me can eat there, be taken care of, and have a really good meal, and they do it with a business model that's not predatory. It's possible. They also give to the Evanston community. I just don't have the list with me, and I wanted to give them credit for that, too. They also have free parking for people. The right to repair means, with regard to the houses, we start-
We're up with our time.
Okay. So my concluding sentence, and I'll be submitting this whole, this whole article. But with regard to the right to repair, I think we should look at the right of people to remain in their homes and have their homes repaired, and that that would be a great source of affordable housing and a lot of source of, a lot of increase in pride of ownership and in pride of having people stay and age in place gracefully with the rest of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doreen. Okay. Priscilla Giles, Ms. Giles, you're the last speaker tonight, so welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Fleetwood, Jordan, has come a long way from the shack that I remember it used to be, but we're still working, I understand, on getting a circle in front, like the new circle in front of Robert Crown. One of the people who had to leave Evanston for the high cost of living, came to my house to shovel snow on Saturday, but there was no snow to shovel. He was replaced to another city close by. And Sunday, when there was a lot of snow, there was no one to shovel the snow. I think we need to think about the people who are unable to shovel snow, who cannot afford to pay someone to shovel the snow. I've lived in Evanston long enough to know that the sidewalks, alleys, and streets were all shoveled with less tax money than is coming in now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. And thank you, everybody, for coming out for public comment this evening. I know everybody appreciates the spirited conversation and dialogue. I shouldn't say dialogue, because I know that some people want dialogue, and we're not able to offer you dialogue, but comments from the public. So thank you. We're not going to move on to the agenda this evening. The first item of business is a special orders item, and this is for discussion. This is the reparations subcommittee discussion. I had brought this up at a prior meeting about wanting the council to have a conversation about this committee, whether it should be more than just three aldermen. Right now, we have two on it, and what the composition and the structure and all that would be. So this is for discussion. So would anyone like to move this item?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So this item, SP1 now, is open for discussion among the council. And this, again, is about the reparations subcommittee discussion. So let me start off then, so I don't see any lights. I would just say that, you know, there are two really difficult parts of, you know, any kind of reparations program, in my opinion. One is, do you have a revenue source? And I think that the work that this city council did was really novel, to use, you know, designate up to 10, you know, the $10 million, the first $10 million of cannabis revenue into a reparations fund. The second part is really complex and really difficult, and it needs, in my opinion, a lot of thought by a bunch of different people, okay, on this. And so I am supportive of this idea that this committee be expanded, and, you know, I think it ought to include and be a multidisciplinary group, okay, including somebody with a legal background and law background, including people that have expertise in some of the different areas where we may be looking to make these investments, whether that be, you know, entrepreneurship, or housing, or those areas. So I just, I'll start it off there and open this up. All right, Alderman, your statements.
So I agree that the input should come from those backgrounds, and that's why their request included that our legal team or our corporate counsel at the time be a part of that committee. And in addition to that, there has been outreach to community leaders and experts in different disciplines, as you mentioned, to weigh in and give feedback in a advisory role, possibly a community group, a stakeholder group. And there's been an initial meeting. So I agree that we will need input from many experts. We have had an offer of input from several different institutions that would be considered experts, not only NARC and COBRA, but other national institutions that work on diversity inclusion and the racial wealth gap and other economic opportunities. So I agree, but I would want us to have a working group that can take the feedback from the community and have some action. So I've made a couple of recommendations for appointment. I don't know that there's been any further communication, or if there's a process, or if there's even an application open for them, but they are in line with what you're speaking to, someone, especially as we focus on housing as a priority, or homeownership, rather, as we focus on business development for the black community, and as we noted in our subcommittee meeting on Friday, a focus on trauma. And I think that some of this is in partnership with, for example, the YWCA, the Equity Empowerment Commission, is going to be working on the healing circles, and there's some opportunity to address trauma. We brought up another model that was recommended by, in COBRA, as a model for healing the trauma. But I would like for us to make whatever decision we're going to make so that we can move forward with initiatives that can be implemented sometime, like early fall, is the goal.
Great. So a couple of names have been forwarded to me of, I think, good, you know, good people in the community. What I'm looking for, and I think we're trying to get some consensus around from the council, is, you know, do we want this to be some sort of, you know, working group or task force, okay? And there are certain people assigned to it, and then obviously they're working with other people. What would that structure take? Do you want me to, us to call for people that are interested? Do you only want people that are in the community to be on it? Could somebody outside the community, who's an expert in one of these areas, that Alderman Ru Simmons said, you know, be included in it? Yeah, I'm looking for that kind of, the guidance and discussion. Next up, we've got Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think what we're challenged with, and because we're, this is all due to us, although there's been a tremendous amount of research and history to the whole issue, I'm working with the deadline of trying to get things together and some type of policy in place by September, right around the time that we're going to be, we have the opportunity to spend the funds. I think that's consistent with what we've discussed in our committee meeting. One of the people that come to mind is Dr. Alvin Tillery, and I think that he has earned the respect of just the larger council. I think he brings the resources of Northwestern and an academic approach in how we can shape our policies. So he's a different voice than what we're used to listening to around the table, and I think that he would be a welcome addition to our committee, just given the short timeline, the fact that he's in town, and we meet during the day, you know, like right in the middle of the day, which isn't easy for everyone. So I would be a little concerned about expanding the committee to a larger number where we have to start to worry about Quorum in a very condensed period of time. And I remind folks, you know, all of these funds that we're going to be dispensing, dispersing, it's a full council vote, and all that stuff is going to be in public. So right now, the challenge is just to get enough input to bring something to city council that we can vote on. And so keep it nimble, keep it small, and if we want to add two or three different voices, then I would be in support of that with Dr. Tillery at the top of my list.
Okay, thank you. I think that begs the question, and something you can think about, Michelle, is, you know, could this be structured in such a way, if it was a working group, as I think Alderman Ru Simmons said, that the whole core, if we have a core that's part of this group, that maybe Quorum doesn't apply to it, maybe it's set up in a certain way? I don't know if that's possible. That's something to think about. We've got all the lights on, so let me go to those. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm not sure if you read any of the report of our last meeting, but I thought it was our best meeting. And we had, that was our first public meeting. And we began to talk about expanding our scope in terms of topics. And I think that's important, having to do with who we're going to be adding to the committee. And one of the things, and I have a lot more to say, but I want to add this upfront before I forget. One of the things that I attended today was the St. Francis Hospital's annual Martin Luther King celebration, which is always, it is so sensitive. I've never seen any of you all there, and it's, and I know everybody has other places to go, but I always go there because it's in my ward. It is the most beautiful ceremony, and today, and I don't know if Reverend Neighbors is still here or not, but the focus today was on health care equity, mind, body, and spirit. And that's what we talked about adding at our last meeting, of the working group of our subcommittee, which is, I want to move on to that, which is what we said we thought we should be. The subcommittee should be the working group, the business group. And what we discussed also was, there are these pockets of people out in the community meeting. So it's sort of a wagon wheel format, where people are meeting here and there, and here and there. And we're going to begin, I believe, this was just the beginning of this discussion, to bring in some of the leaders of those groups, who are the affected parties, to have them focus on individual topics and go from there. But Peter suggested that we add a mortgage authority to our group. I suggested that I would like to have a development specialist so that we could add to our fundraising, who could help me go to banks and, you know, the universities to, you know, gather more funds, more donations, and, you know, health care people and housing people. And so I think we're really on the right track. And then Alderman Simmons has several people that she's reached out to. I think we're really on the right track. And then, you know, there are those people who are complaining they don't like our program. We don't have a program. We keep telling people that. We are going slow, slowly, so that we have the best program ever. And once we get it, it'll be the only program, so it will be the best program. But we want to do it right. And I just think, given Kimberly Richardson's guidance and Shanika, it's, we're just, we are, I think we are on the right track. And I would encourage anybody to come and meet with us, and I think we're doing, I think we're doing the best anybody could expect us to do at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. Okay, thank you, Alderman. I've got several lights on. Alderman Wilson, and then I've got Alderman Winn.
I think it was sort of a threshold question. Alderman Braithwaite's not on the committee yet, is that right?
To appoint him.
Again, I'm sort of looking for guidance. When we first started it, we put three Aldermen on.
I guess it's up for discussion, but I don't know that we need to vote on that per se to appoint to a committee. But I would suggest that we go ahead and engage Alderman Braithwaite in that role, since he, he's already started, so.
By acclamation.
Yeah, and, you know, from what I'm hearing from the committee members, and the people that are participating, it seems that you guys are self-initiating, and reaching out and finding the people that you're going to need to kind of get to the next level and the next step. So, I think, you know, with the three committee members, if, if I'm hearing correctly, you're going to go out, find more people, but kind of give us some direction on what you think you need, as opposed to us telling you all what we think you should have. Is that a fair characterization?
I think if you have great ideas, we could use all the great ideas.
Oh, no, sure.
So, I think, I think that's exactly, oh, sorry, that's exactly it. There are so many areas of expertise that we need, so to appoint everybody to the committee just won't be efficient, because the work is innovative, so we're learning as we go in certain ways. And so, we've been able to do outreach to find the experts that we need, and they've made themselves available, and I think that will be ongoing, the ongoing need of the committee. So, if we could keep it, you know, small, and then we have the opportunity to invite, we already have organizations that want to come in and give presentations, and offer proposals, and it doesn't, it hasn't ended. I mean, it's been a steady stream of opportunity to work with content experts, just outside of our community, nationwide, and I think that makes the most sense. So, it gives us that opportunity to actually get things done, but bring in the experts as we need them.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense to me.
Alderman Winn.
Well, I do, I do think that those are, as you develop it, as you said, Alderman Ru Simmons, it's innovative, you'll, you, you come, come up with the expertise that you need, and I was thinking back to Dr. Tillery when he was here, and I know he offered to help, and Alderman Braithwaite has mentioned that, and when he has spoken, the two times I've heard him, to me, he seems as though he's this remarkable resource of other people, and Alderman Rainey, maybe you're already thinking this, of expertise that we could tap into as well, for, for particular aspects of this issue. I also think that our law department is, we, we do need to have lawyers participate in this, but I don't know that our law department has the time to work on this. And I know that, I believe when you all came back from the National League of Cities Conference, there was some mention of the ACLU being eager to participate, and I think tapping into an organization like that, Alderman Ru Simmons and I talked about, talking to, several months ago, you and I talked about getting in contact with several of the law, law schools in the area to find out professors who are interested in this, or who are doing research, or who would have students available to do research. So, I, those are suggestions that I have, because I think our law department is a very busy, active law firm, and what this is going to require a lot of research and time and analysis, that someone else may already have done, and I think that would be worthwhile to pursue.
And the ACLU has reached out to us and said, we want to be part of your effort.
I, well, I, let's take them up on it.
Okay, Alderman Ru Simmons.
I don't think I had anything more at this time.
Okay. So, based on what I'm hearing in this whole conversation, it sounds like the approach that the committee is taking, that the council's comfortable with, is, we have a subcommittee of the Evanston City Council, which is three Aldermen, Alderman Ru Simmons, Alderman Rainey, and now Alderman Braithwaite, that are on it. They're taking sort of a wheel and spoke approach to this, right, where you've got a bunch of spokes that sort of come off of that, that are focused on different areas, okay? And that we're leaving it up to the subcommittee, okay, to, you know, do that, do that work. They would be supported by Kimberly Richardson, is that correct? Okay, with the city, sort of the staff liaison there. The other thing that I've heard, and I feel strongly about this, is that I do think there needs to be within that core, almost, if I look at the three as the core, and Kimberly Richardson being the fourth, I do think there needs to be a lawyer there. I think that's, that's really important.
Can I chime in here?
Yeah, you're a lawyer, aren't you?
Of course, Alderman Ru Simmons included the law department, we appreciate that. But Alderman Winn is correct, we are neither experts in this matter, and I understand there are very few lawyers who are experts, because this is so new, but the bandwidth in the department is very small right now, two senior attorneys just left at the same time, and so, we, we would appreciate greatly this, if the ACLU could take a lot of the burden on this project, because it is so significant, it's very important research, and, and I think someone who can devote more time to this would be great. And then you can make a motion to appoint Alderman Braithwaite, that would be great.
Okay, okay. Let's, before we do that, let me just go to Alderman Ru Simmons.
I just want to be clear on the expectation is, of course, we would need to have the legal expertise, but are you asking that we appoint, that we appoint an attorney? Because what I'm hearing now is, we don't have the staff capacity, so we would have to contract someone, or you're saying, appoint the ACLU? I mean, it doesn't, can we just get their expert support?
Yeah, I don't think they need to be formally appointed as part of the subcommittee as a voting member, but certainly their support to do legal research would be great.
Yeah, and, and I'm sort of comparing some, them to Kimberly Richardson, the deputy city manager, like, they are the same person. We're not rotating out, you know, over the next nine months, different, different attorneys per se, and, you know, preferably because, again, this is very high-profile, there's lots of national interest in them. The ACLU or somebody else would be, some other public interest group would be willing to help here, you know, pro bono, so to speak, on their, on their own dime. And then, if the time comes, and the council or the city attorney feels like we need our own legal representation to take a look at whatever's been constructed, to make sure we're properly managing the risk here for the city, that we would go out and obtain that at that point in time. Okay, okay. So, all right, so seeing no more lights, is there a motion related to Alderman Braithwaite?
I move to appoint Alderman Braithwaite.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Alderman Braithwaite, congratulations, you're now part of the official subcommittee of the reparations, and, and thank you, everybody, for the work you've done so far, and the hard work to come, and this is really, really complex, but, but we're smart, and we'll figure it out, but we need to think, think hard about this stuff. Okay, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda of the Evanston City Council. I'd ask that we approach this consent agenda the way that we have in recent times, where I'm going to ask Alderman to take a look, and say if there's anything you would like to have removed from the consent agenda. Okay, so let's take a minute, and people can take a look at that, and then let me P1, well, P1 will be removed from the agenda. I'm also going to go ahead and remove A2, which is the Amazon credit card activity.
Can you remove P3, please?
P3 is removed.
And P7?
And P7 is removed.
A21?
Okay, in terms of A21, which somebody asked to remove, my understanding from the city managers, that was held in committee?
It was, yes.
Okay, so A21's in committee, so that won't, that's, okay, held in committee, okay. Are there any other items that people would like removed from the consent agenda?
P2 was held, right, as well?
It never came to committee.
So.
So, P2 is off the consent agenda, or that never went to the committee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other items? Has everyone had enough time to look at it all? Okay, all right, is there a motion to move the consent agenda?
Second.
All right.
We do have a suspension of the rules, shall we? So, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules with regard to P6, which is on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, the rules, P6 will be, was it P6?
Yes.
I'm sorry, will be for introduction and action, then? Was there?
Okay, so I move that we suspend the rules on A25 as well.
All in favor suspending the rules?
Aye.
On A25, any opposed? Okay, so, A25 will be for introduction and action as well.
All right, move the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, could you please take the role on the consent agenda?
Yes, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Winn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ru Simmons, Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Okay, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote. We're now going to move to the items that were removed from the agenda. We'll start with A2. Alderman Rainey, if you could introduce A2.
Okay, A2, I move approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity for the period ending November 26, 2019, in the amount of $13,190.11.
Second.
All right. City Clerk, could you take the role on A2, please?
Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Winn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ru Simmons, Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
All right, A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote, with Alderman Sufferton abstaining. Alderman Rainey, could you take us to A4, please?
Yes, A4. Members of the Evanston City Council that participated in the consultant interviews recommend city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with GOV-HR to perform the executive search for Evanston's next city manager. There's a budget of $35,000. One-third of the recruitment fee is due upon the acceptance of the proposal, one-third due when the candidate, when the candidates forwarded, are forwarded to the city for consideration, and the remaining one-third is due when recruitment is complete. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to take the role. City Clerk, could you call the role on A4, please?
Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Winn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ru Simmons, Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, and Alderman Fleming.
All right, A4, approval of contract GOV-HR to perform the executive search for the next Evanston city manager, passes on a six to two vote. All right, we're now going to move over to the planning and development items. On that, Alderman Sufferton, could you move P1, please?
Item P1 is Resolution 4R20 authorizing the city of Evanston to establish a moratorium on condominium deconversion. Staff recommend city council adoption of Resolution 4R20 authorizing the city of Evanston to establish a moratorium on condominium deconversions. Moratorium would be in place for a six-month period following adoption of Resolution 4R20. We had an amendment in committee establishing a three-month moratorium period.
Okay, so this passed out of committee being three months?
Yeah.
Okay.
It did not, it was a tie.
It was a tie in committee, okay. All right. Is there a sec, is there a second to?
Not yet.
Okay, so this is now open for, for conversation. Alderman Rainey.
So, I believe Alderman Wilson argued that, you know, this is real estate, and we should really keep our hands off it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and that in the past, condominium laws were made, and now people are in big trouble because they don't have reserves, et cetera, et cetera. I will tell you that when the city of Evanston got involved in making condominium law back in the 80s, they saved people from, from problems, and they did not create problems. I'm not saying this is exactly the same thing, but it is quite the reverse. A three-month period protecting people from some of the stories we heard two weeks ago regarding Hampton Parkway's, those are not unique stories. Now, there are some buildings, like we heard about tonight, with the young man with his little baby carriage, you know, yeah, there are people underwater in some of these buildings who are trying to lure real estate developers to buy their buildings, because they're underwater. I get that, I get that, and this three-month moratorium is not going to hurt them. They can, they can get developers to come in and buy their buildings for a price that is more than, than they would get if they put them on the market by themselves, but we're not talking about those people. We're talking about people who are in these buildings, like, that are on Asbury and other places, where, where people are terrified that they're going to lose their homes for less than what they're worth. And it's not only that, but these are people who did not make a decision to sell their units, and there has to be some protection for them. And all I'm saying is, we might look at the state law, and I don't think, other than Alderman Wilson sitting here, I'm not sure any of us are really expert at what the state law says. So, I'm just saying, let's take a look at it, let's give ourselves three months, maybe we ought to rerun the show where Hampton Parkway came and told us, and I, I did get a couple of calls from Hampton Parkway about people who were dying to sell their unit. But I think, and that was long after we had our meeting about suggesting a moratorium. Let's, let's take a look and see, is there something we can do to make things better in, in those three months? And I really think you can, you can change behavior by letting people know you're going to take a look at the law. There is nothing wrong with doing that. And to say that municipalities have no business looking at the way real estate law operates is just wrong, that's just totally wrong. We do it all the time, we do it all the time.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And Alderman Rainey, that's a little bit overstated from, from my position. There are protections in place, it requires a 75% vote. I do think that we should consider more robust protections, I think that's important. We've heard from a number of people in the community who have been put in situations that they don't want to be in, this could have a significant adverse impact on the ability to age in place, so there are real and realistic concerns and things to take into account, so we should address that. However, in the meantime, while we work out that, that idea of more robust protections, I don't think that we should act in a way that's going to harm other people who are in the middle of a process to do something. We heard from a gentleman tonight, I've heard from some people throughout the course of the day, three might, three months might not seem like a long time, but if the developer or the purchaser backs out of the transaction, then that's harm that can't be, that can't be fixed. You know, I, I just don't think that we should be instituting this complete ban, I think that we should be aggressively pursuing, you know, possible options to ensure that there are more robust protections, but I don't think that we should ban these and, and preclude people from selling their properties.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey.
Well, if, if they're in the Well, if, if they're in the process of a deconversion, I think I would consider them in the pipeline and probably not subject to the, to the moratorium. You know, if they're, if they've got like, you know, 60% agreeing to sell, I'm, I think they're already on their way, and so probably not subject to the moratorium. I'm not sure how that would work.
But that's not how it's drafted, so it's, it's a, it's a bright line rule.
Any, any more conversation?
I, I just think it would be interesting if, if Hampton Parkway hadn't gotten a contract so far. I'll bet they'd be standing right up here at this podium begging you to change your mind. But I believe that we helped them get to the point where they're at, so.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. All right. Seeing, seeing no more lights. City clerk, I'm going to ask you to call a role on this one. This is Resolution 4-R-20 authorizing the city of Evanston to, oh, to, I may need to do another role here, to establish a moratorium on condominium conversions. There was an amend, there was an amendment, and we, we need to.
Amendment to section two.
We need to move the amendment first, don't we? Or?
No.
Oh, that already happened?
The committee already, the committee approved the amendment.
Okay. So the pretty committees have moved the, moved the amendment, so it is up here as a three-month moratorium. So city clerk, if you could call the role, please.
Yes. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Winn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruessens.
Yeah, aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
All right. So the moratorium fails on a five to three vote. So that was P1. I did the math right on that, right, everybody? I know I was a little hesitant there. I try to keep track of all of this, okay? So that failed to pass on a five to three vote. Okay, Alderman Sufferton, could you take us to P3?
I move item P3, ordinance 5020 granting special use for a commercial indoor recreation facility born to win at 2510 Green Bay Road. The zoning board of appeals and staff recommend adoption of ordinance 5020 granting special use approval for a commercial indoor recreation facility born to win at 2510 Green Bay Road and the B1A Business District and OCSC Central Street Overlay District. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meets all the standards for a special use for this district for introduction.
And this is for introduction? Is there, is there a second on this?
Second.
Okay. This is open for conversation. Alderman Fleming.
And just was going to abstain because I work in the building. That's why I pulled it off. I don't have a comment.
Do you work there, Peter?
That's my reason for abstaining.
I don't think you have to abstain.
I chose to.
Choose to, all right.
The mayor's not paying attention.
I'm sorry, everybody. Okay, so seeing, seeing, seeing no more lights and discussion on P3, city clerk, could you please, and this has been moved and seconded, could you please take the role?
Yes. Alderman Winn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruessens.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
And Alderman Fleming.
I abstain.
All right. So thank you, everybody. P3 passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote, with Alderman Fleming abstaining. Alderman Sufferton, if you could take us to P7.
I move item P7, ordinance 171-019, amending Title VI accessory dwelling unit requirements and qualifications. Plan, commission, and staff recommend city council adoption of ordinance 171-019 as amended, a zoning ordinance text amendment to revise the definition of coach house and regulations related to accessory dwelling units. The ordinance has been amended to remove the height restriction, which would have required that an ADU be shorter than the primary residential structure for non-landmarks and outside of historic districts. This is for action.
Okay. All right. The item has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ravel.
I asked to have this removed from the agenda because I also, I need to abstain from this.
Okay.
Because of my membership in the.
In the EDC. Okay. All right. Seeing no more discussion, city clerk, could you please, please take the role on P7, ordinance 171-0-19, which is the accessory dwelling units, and this is for action.
Yes. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Winn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruessens.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
I abstain.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
And Alderman Fleming.
All right. P7 passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote, with Alderman Ravel abstaining. We are now going to move into call of the wards.
Who did we start with? Alderman Braithwaite?
Okay. Alderman Braithwaite, if you'd start us on call of wards.
Thank you. Just wishing all members and city staff a happy new year, looking forward to the work that we have ahead of us. I also would like to make a referral, and I think this will come back to city council to bring back the resolution to support the compassion to die.
I would go back to human services. We could put that on for.
What happened to that?
February? It was, my recollection, it was held in committee.
Okay.
It's the human services.
Okay.
I don't think it was actually officially moved or held. It was just an item for discussion.
Right.
That one time it came before human services.
That's correct.
Okay. We have rules committee next week, and one agenda item on rules committee is a larger discussion about advisory resolutions. So I guess pending the outcome of that discussion, we can make a decision about which meeting to send it to, because if, if the consensus from the council is to continue to do advisory resolutions, then the second piece of that agenda item is to determine which committee they would go to.
Which is probably why I'm suggesting we bring it straight to council prior to that discussion.
We don't have a council, we have a council meeting on Tuesday. I don't know that I could get it ready for that, but I could get it ready for the 27th, and we could go.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you.
All right. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I forgot to mention in city manager announcements that we have rules committee next week at 6:00 with city council, at 7:00 focused on affordable housing.
Great. Thank you. And that's next Tuesday, because Monday's my.
Correct. Next Tuesday night.
Okay. All right. So thank you. Anything else, Alderman Braithwaite? Okay. Alderman Winn?
Yes, I'd like to announce and welcome everyone to a third ward town hall meeting on the 23rd, Thursday, the 23rd, at Lincoln Schools from 7:00 to 8:30, and everyone is welcome to join. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I had opportunity to spend a little bit of time at the Crown Center. The ice is open, and there was a full day on both sheets of ice of hockey on Saturday. Very exciting to see how excited the kids and families are to experience their new community center, and it's, it's pretty remarkable and a really exciting time for our community. And that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank, thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruessens.
Thank you. Sending heartfelt condolences to Judge Lino Jean Baptiste and his entire family for the loss of his mother, as well as to the family of Mr. Sidney Castleberry. My condolences to the families.
Thank you. Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
I'd just like to mention two upcoming seventh ward meetings. One is this coming Thursday, January 16th. It's going to be in the parasol room at 7:00 o'clock, and this is to discuss a proposed event-based resident-only parking restriction around the Northwestern Athletic Campus. And the second meeting is a regular ward meeting, January 23rd, the following Thursday, at the Ecology Center at 7:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow night at the Levy Center at 7:30, a really interesting meeting being held in the eighth ward on cannabis licensing. Very fascinating lineup of speakers. One from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity from the state of Illinois, who's going to present a PowerPoint on the social equity loan program for cannabis. Mr. Lot, the vice president of academic affairs at Oakton Community College, is going to speak about their cannabis curriculum, which has really been growing, excuse the pun. And one of the foremost cannabis lawyers in the city of Chicago is going to speak on the overview of licensing. And also somebody from the city of Evanston, I think Paul is going to speak about zoning, et cetera, in, in the city. So if you have any questions at all about licensing or getting into the cannabis business, you need to be at this meeting at 7:30. Also, I want to say one more time about St. Francis's Martin Luther King event. It's on YouTube, and if you have any time, it's just the most wonderful program, so you might want to take a look at it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fleming?
Yes. Thanks. I also want to give condolences to Sidney Castleberry's family. I know he used to live in the fifth ward, he now has lived in the ninth ward, and he has been, from 2011 to 2018, served on the either Mayor's Task Force for Homeless, the Homeless and Housing Commission, Human Relations Commission, so very busy community advocate, also on the Board of Connections for the Homeless. Also want to let my peers know, and those listening, that for the first time, ETHS is sending a busload of students to the Iowa caucus. They're going with, how did I say that wrong? Thank you. Make the challenge. They're going to be door-knocking and canvassing and doing all that political stuff out in the cold. So they're leaving at 6:30 in the morning on Friday. If you'd like to go send them out and, and encourage them to do their democratic duty, and they'll be back on Sunday, and I, later maybe we can have them here to speak about it. I have to give the disclaimer, my daughter is one of the students going, but they're super excited. The next thing is, I purchased a shirt from the ETHS Dreamers Club. They are raising money to support undocumented students in ETHS, so I'm happy to share the website with you if you'd like to help them out. And then my last one is, I'm having a ward meeting on Saturday, I mean, excuse me, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, and we are going to have a state, federal, and county updates from all your local elected officials will be there to give you information about what is happening and their jurisdictions on your behalf. I have a question for the city manager, which is, there has been now a couple comments about $22 million that leaves Evanston and goes to nuclear weapons, and so I'm, I'm just interested in what that is. The speaker tonight made a reference, and then at the last meeting, so.
We will look into it. And back to you.
Thank you. That was a striking number.
I think that's our federal tax money that gets.
Okay, well.
I'm pretty sure that's.
That, that might be true, but it just was presented in a way that I'd like, you can confuse it to think it's coming out of our budget, so.
Oh, no, no, yeah, definitely not.
So I'd like for us to just have some clarity, clarity on that. And then the speakers who talked about their concern about youth and young adult also mentioned a racial equity audit, and I would definitely support that as something that we do as we are continuing our work internally. I think that as we've joined Gare, if you ever look at their model and other places, it's one of the things they do recommend, which is essentially, you know, an assessment of internally how we're doing around racial equity and pay. And Northwestern came out with an article back in October about pay discrepancies by race, and the city manager's working on a memo for that, so I would love for us to move forward to have someone do an audit so that our staff kind of have a good blueprint of where we need to start their internal work.[1698.26]